This special meeting of the Wichita Board of Education for February 17th is now called to order. The Wichita Public Schools will be the district of choice in our region where all students and staff are empowered to dream, believe, and achieve. If you'd join me in a moment of silence. Thank you. If you would rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you. Patrick, first item?
First item of business, public communications.
We have 10 speakers today. Thank you for joining us. The first speaker, oh, a couple of housekeeping items just real quick. If you have handouts, please hand them to the board clerk with the camera angles. We're asking no one to approach up this area. And also no public displays. I know this has not been easy, but you guys have been doing a great job on that. And when you see what's happened at school board meetings throughout the nation, we have done an excellent job here in Wichita, and that's a lot to do with your efforts. We do have one speaker today who has a legally binding exemption from wearing a mask, so I just wanted to warn you. If you do not have that, we're asking you to wear your mask or to pull your mask up. And third, just for the board members, if you would raise your hand, since we don't have the cue thing. I don't want us, we spoke a little bit over each other the last meeting. So if you would just raise your hand, I will write your name down and I'll make sure you get called upon. Thank you very much for that. Our first speaker is Jake Boxberger. Welcome Jake.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Ready? Hello, everyone. My name is Jake Boxberger. I am the father of two strong young men, one of which is currently in the Wichita Public School system, with the other joining him next year. Two Sundays ago, me and others gathered together to watch the Super Bowl. The attendance at the Super Bowl was 70,048. As some of you may know, the Super Bowl was hosted in LA. At the time, LA County was under an indoor mask mandate. As people entered the stadium by the droves, they were each handed a KN95 mask. But as many of you watched on TV, nobody was wearing a mask. Ironically, the mayor of LA County was shown without his mask. Elected leaders telling others how to live their lives, but doing as they wish. Do as I say, not as I do. We've had two years to witness experience and study COVID. When the jab first became available, we focused on the elderly and the first responders. Following close were the teachers. It wasn't until recently that the FDA approved shots for kids ages five to 12. Why do you think that was? If the boat was sinking, do we hand over the elderly first or the kids? The answer is simple. Kids are resilient and are not being impacted by this virus. If they were, our mainstream media would be sure to tell us. I've had the jab twice. I've also had COVID twice. Both times, my boys either tested positive with no symptoms or simply never tested positive. Resilient. My children are allowed to be masked in the grocery store, church, sporting events, restaurants, etc. For my youngest in pre-K, his school never implemented the mask mandate, and the school has never once been shut down. Somehow, his school figured it out. But for my oldest, when it comes to school, our elected officials seem to know what's best for his health. As a parent, let me be very clear to you. When it comes to the health and safety of my children, I know what's best for my children, not you. Stop trying to be my child's parent. Take the monkey off your back and let me carry that burden. Let parents make choices that they feel are best for their children. I also have a nephew who is in the Wichita Public School system. He struggles with this speech and must visit a speech therapist regularly. Do you think masks are helping him when he works on pronunciations? Or any young kid for that matter. These kids' brains are sponges right now, and these masks are doing more harm than good. They are destroying social development and training them that without one being worn, they aren't safe. For the three elected officials who voted last session to make masks optional, thank you. Thank you for listening to many parents such as myself. For the other four, I ask that you reconsider this mask mandate for the reasons I've stated. Let parents parent. You focus on the curriculum and reversing the potential damage you have done to them with this extended mask mandate. God bless our children. Thank you, everyone.
Again. Again, you need to let the words of the speakers soak into the Board of Education. So no public. If we cannot control this, we will clear this room. One more time. We will have a orderly public meeting. We will show the public that we can do this. And I ask for your cooperation. Next speaker is Robert Howes. Patrick, there's a handout. Welcome, Robert.
Board members, Dr. Thompson, staff, and fellow citizens. My name is Robert Howes. I've lived in Wichita for over 50 years. I have ancestral roots in Kansas dating back to the 18th, to the 19th century. I worked in the design and development of business jets for over 40 years, where I made a living practicing the hard sciences in an environment where faulty science would result in the loss of life. I also taught science at two of our local universities. In the current debate over masking in schools, the stakes are also high. Those at risk from decisions made as a result of faulty science include not only students, but teachers, support staff, and the community. At the last Board of Education meeting, a resolution was introduced that would have ended the current mask mandate. The resolution failed to pass. In the debate leading up to the vote, the claim was made that there is no scientific evidence that masks are effective in preventing the transmission of the virus. In fact, that claim was repeated throughout the debates. I checked to see if I could verify that claim. Quite to the contrary, there were numerous peer-reviewed studies showing that masks were indeed effective in stemming the transmission of the virus. In fact, one study conducted aboard the USS Theodore Roosevelt involving some 382 sailors showed that masks reduced the risk of infection by 70%. The study was conducted in an environment that's similar to our classroom settings. There were also numerous peer-reviewed studies showing that there are no adverse effects from masking. In closing, I would like to say a word about the peer review process. To qualify as a peer review to a study, a person must be in the same field of expertise. For example, an orthopedic surgeon, while he might be very skilled in his field, is not qualified to be a peer reviewer for an epidemiological study. In conclusion, I repeat, there are numerous peer-reviewed studies showing that masks are effective. Let the record reflect that. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. Next speaker is Heather Dunning. Welcome, Heather.
My son has autism, moderate to high functioning, and requires IEP services. My daughter is neurotypical. All USD 259 families were put in stressful situations, forced to jump over hurdles of rapid-changing health information and trying to digest and understand the best possible plans to keep us all safe. We understood the pressure put on the Board of Education members to make tough decisions the first few months. In totality, my son was behind academically and socially, but because of this, or because of this, but so were other students. That made things more palatable. We understood and supported as parents. We tolerated the abuse of our freedoms for the greater good. Let's fast forward to February last school year. My son's school showed a graphic video of a child being decapitated during class. This was an approved USD 259 video shown by the school. No letter of consent was requested to garner parent approval of this terribly violent video. I found out a day or two later when my son started having nightmares and mood changes. The school showed little to no remorse when it made aware, stating, "That's part of our history." This set the pace for a long road ahead. I was sure, when he returned to school this year, his mask exemption would be accepted. But to our surprise, it was not. Multiple requests were made to the school for an honored medical exemption, and many denials were given. I want you to understand how much time this has cost my family. You have put my students in many unsafe and unhealthy environments with your policies. You have made us parents feel small and cost us so much time. Time reading teacher responses of his behavior, such as, "He goes to the bathroom too much." We spend the time to understand that our son hides in the bathroom stalls to make others more comfortable. To take a moment to pause, the sensory overload he is being forced to endure from masking, to breathe freely. This has cost my son five teeth, which he tore out of his head from stress. Time we have spent treating the self-inflicted wounds on his eyes and ears caused by mask wearing. This has cost my daughter time, the time she has lost growing and learning from facial expressions of her teachers and peers. Time she could have been using to learn how to enunciate words properly without a mouth covering. But instead, time with a snot and drool-filled rag covering her nose and mouth. Does this sound healthy? Time we have spent ensuring my son's safety from depression, because this time, it's serious. This time could cause permanent damage. You have violated our parental, individual, and constitutional rights with your mask policies. There are too many science-based facts to continue allowing these masks on the USD 259 students any longer. Let our children breathe. Let them see joy on the faces of their friends and teachers. We have had our constitutional rights as Kansas citizens manipulated and abused for far too long. We have been too considerate and too understanding. We are the parents, and we need to decide what is best for our children. Do not waste any more of my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Heather. Please, please, no clapping. Next speaker is Justin Dunning.
My name is Justin Dunning. I have two children within the USD 259 school district. And you've just heard from my wife about the emotional damage the mask mandate has caused our family. Rather than rehash what she just said, I will appeal to logic and reason. I have literally committed hundreds of hours to research these last few years, and all that research can be summed up in the following statement. Mask mandates cause more harm in developing children than good. You are not the Department of Health. You are the Board of Education. You've assumed the role of a licensed medical professional by forcing a medical device on our children. This is a clear violation of Kansas state law. As stated by the FDA, the use of masks has not been proven for antiviral protection. In fact, it says on the box that it does not prevent the spread of disease and infection. By forcing masks on our children, you are applying what is considered a medical device. And if you are going to act in this capacity, you are required to obtain informed consent. According to the FDA, informed consent requires you to provide the understanding and nature of the procedure or device. Understanding the risks and benefits, offer reasonable alternatives, and understand the risk and benefits of all these alternatives. It also states that consent cannot be obtained under coercion, meaning no undue influence in punishment or reward. When enrolling our children, we did not see any paper that provides us with the benefits, risks, or side effects of a child wearing a mask for seven-plus hours a day. We did not see in any offer of any alternative options, nor did we see anything that asked for our permission to apply a medical device. I'm confident that not allowing a child to attend a public school and receive a free and appropriate in-person education is a form of coercion. All of this adds up to a failure to obtain informed consent. The National Institute of Health has 30-plus studies showing that masks do not prevent the spread of viruses. The NIH also has over 20 studies demonstrating that long-term mask wearing can have negative effects and consequences on the wearer. Those very studies show breathing issues created and exacerbated by long-term mask wearing along with skin and mucous membrane infections. The U.S. Department of Education's Restraint and Seclusion Document states, "A physical restraint can never restrict breathing." According to the NIH studies, the masks do exactly that. They restrict breathing. Tell me, are you prepared to assume the liability of any and all adverse effects to our child's health caused by a long-term mask wearing? How about the detrimental effects that are not so obvious? Studies from Brown University, Vinton &amp; Hardik, and even Harvard demonstrate clear negative effects on cognitive ability and detrimental psychological effects. Nelson Mandela was quoted as saying, "There can be no keener revelation of a society's soul than the way in which it treats its children." By that standard, our society is starting to look a lot like an abusive parent. Look, if you as an educator want to wear a mask to protect yourselves from a virus that has a 99% survival rate, then go right ahead. That is your prerogative. But if you yourselves are not willing to bear the responsibility of damaging the very children you claim to advocate for, then you must look past your fearful partisan politics and make this right. No more masks.
Thank you, Justin. And please, please. Next speaker is Miles Banks. It appears Miles is not with us today. Our next speaker is Sarah Denton. It also appears Sarah's not here. Our next speaker is Joseph Shepherd. Welcome, Joseph.
I want to take this time to thank each of you for your service. Public service, especially during these unprecedented times, is a thankless job that requires more sacrifice than the general public ever has the opportunity to see. As public servants, we are called to do what is best for the common good, even when it may make us personally uncomfortable. So I come to you today as an uncle of three USD 259 nieces and nephews, asking that you not only consider the implications of what it means to remove mask mandates for them, but for the educators and support staff who have decided to step up and help educate our children as a village. These educators and support staff put their health and arguably the health of their own families at risk each day they decide to step into a classroom or school. For some of our educators and support staff, like many in the general public, a mask is the only line of defense against COVID-19 due to pre-existing health conditions. For students who walk the hallways in USD 259, it can be their only defense too. While vaccines are available for many students in our schools, there are still significant barriers to preventing students from receiving the vaccine, to include accessibility, parental consent, combating misinformation, language, and cultural barriers. This is reflected in data provided on the Sedgwick County website that showcases since December 2020, ages zero through 17 have been the demographic least to be fully vaccinated. This is not a reflection on the parents or the children of this demographic. As we know, many of the barriers aforementioned play a role in this statistic. A recent survey administered by Freedom to Learn reported that of 800 Kansas teachers, 78% would not recommend the profession to their own students. Teachers noted challenges that have arrived by the pandemic, burnout, and not feeling supported by their own community. As BOE members, you represent the community, and while it is a thankless job, as I mentioned earlier, it is one that you signed up for. So I'm asking that before you make a decision on mask mandates, that you engage our teachers and listen to their voice as an important stakeholder in these conversations. They are the ones in front of students every day, not us. Now is our time to show educators that we will listen before we act. I ask that you take into consideration the students who live in communities disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 and are also less likely to have access to the tools and resources to mitigate the risk of contracting the virus. For those representing these communities, I ask you, what have you done to engage these children and families? Have you attended a district advisory board breakfast? Have you met with your city council representative? How about your commissioner to see how you can work together to ensure that we mitigate the risk of this virus so we can finally get rid of the mask? If the answer to any or all of these questions is no, then there is certainly more work that can be done to make a sound decision. It takes a village to raise and serve our children and families, and I ask that you lean on us, your village. I want to conclude by noting that the USD 259 weekly surveillance report shows a drop in new COVID-19 cases among staff and students. And while this data is exciting and leads us one step closer to removing masks, as one analyzes the data, they will find we've been down this road before. I caution you, before you make a decision, consider Manzlo's hierarchy of needs that looks at safety, and that includes the health and wellness of each student. Thank you all for your time and your service, and best of luck as you make a sound decision today.
Thank you, Joseph. Our next speaker is Karina Hamilton. Welcome, Karina.
Have you ever worn a mask for eight hours? Have you experienced two years without smiles for eight hours a day? Have you considered the long-term damages of our children simply from the lack of facial expressions? My heart breaks for my grandchildren that have suffered at your hands for almost two years. For what? My granddaughter tells me that she can't breathe at school. And she says it's even worse when they don't get mask breaks. My grandson, when I see him, he always says, "Grandma, want to see how fast I can run?" You know what? He's getting slower, and he doesn't even know it. I'm asking you to do the right thing and liberate our children and let their beautiful smiles be seen. I've had COVID twice. I'm overweight. I have severe asthma, and I've survived.
Thank you, Karina. Next speaker is Danica Dixon. Welcome, Danica.
Thank you. Thank you for having me here today. Kansas Statute 726153 states, "Emergency interventions shall be used only when a student presents a reasonable and immediate danger of physical harm to themselves or others." It also states, "Less restrictive alternatives to emergency safety interventions shall be deemed inappropriate or ineffective under the circumstances prior to the use of any emergency safety interventions." A child's existence and physical presence without a mask does not constitute immediate danger of physical harm to themselves or others. If the district cannot prove that a particular individual has COVID, they cannot prove that the individual is a risk to public health and therefore have no authority to restrict the breathing or the movement of the individual with a mask by quarantine or prevent them from attending public schools or meetings. Forced masking is the most restrictive emergency intervention, and this district has not made any effort to impose less restrictive interventions. The statute also prohibits physical restraint that obstructs the airway of a student or any physical restraint that impacts a student's primary mode of communication. A mask physically restrains a child's primary mode of communication, their mouth and their voice. A child's voice cannot be heard or understood as clearly when it is being restrained by a mask. Communication is not just verbal. Facial expressions and lip reading along with listening are a child's primary mode of communication. Covering their lips and facial expressions make them harder to understand and harder for them to communicate. Due to the fact that children are still growing and developing, communication is naturally more difficult for them than adults to begin with. Masks absolutely impede a child's ability to communicate, and since most children in this district are only masking by the force and policy of the board, this board is in direct violation of that Kansas statute. The statute also prohibits mechanical restraint except those protective devices either ordered by a person appropriately licensed to issue the order through the device or required by law. Since there are no orders currently from the local health authority, and there are not currently any local, state, or federal laws or orders issued requiring American citizens to mask against their will, the district's policy violates this portion of this law because no one in this board has a medical license that would grant them the authority to order children or citizens to mask by force, nor does anyone on this board have the authority to create laws in this city, county, state, or country. I realize that your policy was likely created with good intentions. However, good intentions and fear are not grounds for disregarding the oath that you took to uphold the Constitution when you took your positions. The school board's policies must adhere to the law. I have served you today with a letter outlining the state, federal, and international laws that your policies are violating. It's my hope that you will recognize the gravity of this information and make the right decision to stop violating the law and the rights of American citizens immediately. It is our legal right to be able to hold you accountable to the law, and any FBI agent who says that any parent is under investigation for exercising our legal rights will be reported to the Office of Professional Responsibility. Thank you.
Thank you, Danica. Please, please. Our last speaker is Mary Dean.
Thank you. It appears that some people don't know how to follow directions, but oh, well. Good afternoon, Dr. Thompson, Board President Stan Reiser, and board members. It's obvious to me that at the special board meeting held on Tuesday, January 18th, where I provided all the board's members with an outline of history on whose rights have been violated by state and federal laws for over 400 years, that certain members of this board just didn't, I guess, educate yourselves on the issues at all. Instead of discussing the business of how to use funds to help in the education of students and making sure that our teachers have the tools needed to empower students to acquire and meet the requirements based on what the state has deemed for them to excel to the next level of that education, I stand before you again talking about masks. It appears that certain ones of you are not happy in the position that you were elected to, and that is to establish a vision for a public education system in your community. You are responsible for hiring and evaluating the superintendent of schools, adopt policies, and monitor district finances, among other responsibilities. If you are so disgusted with wearing a mask, and this is what we are taking time up to discuss, I am here to request that you resign today. Leave your position because it's evident that you're not wanting to do the business of the school, of the district. It's time for you to go. You're not happy in your position. It's evident in that because you keep taking up time where you can be really discussing important business instead of wasting people's time to come here and talk about masks. Masks are there to protect the students and staff. I had a close friend who was like my nephew. I stated the last time I was here, that passed because of COVID. Passed because he did not wear a mask out in public. I have great-grandchildren, as I stated before, that attend USD 259, and I want them to be protected. And wearing a mask... And wearing a mask is a way to protect them. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mary. We appreciate all the speakers today, and we appreciate the emails, and we appreciate the past speakers we've had. And I know all of us are taking in all that information, and we thank you for that. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, Service Employees International.
Welcome, Esaw.
Thank you. Good afternoon, board members, and thank you for this time. Dr. Thompson, President Reeser, and those that sit behind. I see you've changed the format, and you've saved the best for last. This union has a lot to say, so sit back and relax. Things are going good, but they aren't going great. The do-nothings in Topeka are tied up in debate, and today we sit at 259 with the circus back in town, arguing about masks again because they might just cause a frown, while overlooking important things that happen every day: assaults on staff and suicides and kids murdered while locked away. You're tasked with the responsibility of keeping your staff safe, so what else can you do? No one comes to work each day and hopes to be abused. This means giving adequate training, support, and premium wage. I'm sure you've heard of inflation and what it's done to our pay. Now, I've heard a lot of people talk about expressions not being felt, but I can see, when I talk to folks, what they mean through their eyes. And when people make snarky little laughs underneath their breath, you can tell what's going on. And for the sake of your staff and every student in this school, not just the healthy ones, we implore you to keep masks until the last day of school. At the end of school, there will be an opportunity for less staff, less students to be in the buildings, and it will be a good time to move forward and try. I would also suggest, if you can't wait until then, a few weeks after spring break would be good because everybody will go do something on spring break and come in contact with others that are not in our cohort groups, and possibly numbers may rise. We all want these masks to come off, but we have bigger problems to take care of. We have more important things to do than argue about a piece of cloth. And for that matter, if we're going to have rules, why aren't we enforcing them? Because this isn't the only room I've been in in USD 259 over the past few weeks where management or other people decide they're just not going to wear their masks. They're in their cubicle. They don't need one. We've had plenty of workers get sick. I've had plenty of emails from paraprofessionals asking, "What do I do because my classroom teacher is taking her mask off, and she's letting the kids take their masks off too?" If we're going to have rules, enforce them. And with all due respect, President Reeser, why didn't you clear the room? Stop making idle threats and enforce the policies. All these people behind me with their noses sticking out of their masks and their face shields breathing all over the rest of us are not following the rules. The rules belong and apply to everybody, not Facebook scholars and people who think that they're some type of constitutional professional. You have a business that you're running, and yes, we have to educate kids, but we have to keep kids safe while we do that. And removing masks right now is not the thing to do for your staff or for the students. And if you're worried about kids not being able to see smiles, buy some clear masks. And if you're going to use an analogy where people weren't wearing masks, think about it, the Super Bowl was outside. There was a reason people weren't wearing masks. Your children are inside, and while we're inside buildings, we've got to take extra precautions to keep everyone safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Esaw. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under Reports, United Teachers of Wichita.
Welcome, Brent.
Hello. Good afternoon. President Reeser, Vice President Hedrick, Dr. Thompson, members of the board. As professional educators, we have seen it appropriate to defer to the guidance of public health experts and the medical community for COVID safety protocols throughout this pandemic. We have taken the safety of our students and colleagues seriously during this time, and we thank the board and the district for doing so as well. We have seen the toll this pandemic has taken on our students, their families, our families, and our colleagues. When we were at the height of this last Omicron wave in our community, we stated that when this pandemic subsides, these safety measures will certainly be reconsidered. When you decided to revisit the mask requirement during your regularly scheduled meeting in March, it made a lot of sense. Local COVID data is trending in the right direction, with both the test positivity rate and hospital situations improving from the worst of this last surge. Federal public health agencies are also expected to update their guidance for COVID protocols soon. We would like to see this important decision made when we have confirmation that conditions are better and public health guidance has changed, rather than on the assumption that they will. We have been dedicated in doing the work to educate students in our classrooms, and we have worn masks as required to protect the safety of our students, staff, and all of our families. Hundreds, even thousands of students and staff come together in our schools, arriving from and returning to tens of thousands of households in our community every day. We know that the success and safety of Wichita Public Schools is vital to the health of our city and local economy. When we have confirmation that local health conditions have improved and the public health guidance has changed in the aftermath of this latest COVID surge, we will be ready for mask-wearing to be optional. Thank you for taking the safety of our students and staff seriously as you consider this step.
Thank you, Brent. Patrick, next. We ask everyone to please put on a mask unless you have a medical exemption. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item on the agenda: Education, COVID-19 Protocols, and Mask Mandate.
Cheryl. Kathy, I got you second. She had her hand up. Cheryl.
Obviously, this is a debate that has two sides to it, two strong sides to it. And as board members, we have heard from both sides. I think all of us can testify to that fact, that we get emails from people who want masks removed immediately, and we get emails from people who want to keep masks on until the end of the school year or beyond. We have had the highest COVID rates in the whole pandemic during this last month and a half. We had, on January the 13th, 4,889 students in quarantine. We had 1,033 staff members on January the 21st in quarantine. We had over 1,000 members still on January 31st in quarantine. Our COVID positive rates have been very high. We had 1,308 students on January the 5th with COVID. We had 351 staff members. In January, the month of January, we had over 11,264 people absent from our buildings. What we're seeing now, as all of us recognize, is that we're seeing our rates go down and go down fairly dramatically, and that is absolutely a positive sign for us. In Kansas, yesterday, the rate was 13.1%. In Sedgwick County, it was 7.4%. In Wichita Public Schools, our COVID numbers on February the 18th, which was last Friday because we report on Fridays, we had only 34 students with active COVID, and we had 18 staff members. That's a dramatic change from those numbers in January. We had, for quarantine, on February the 18th, we had 126 students in quarantine and 136 staff members. Now, those staff members were not all teachers. It's staff. It could be parents. It could be office workers. It could be people working in the kitchen. It could be teachers. We have now, right now, on February the 18th, when these numbers were taken, we have 10 elementary schools with over a 10% quarantine rate. We have one middle school, one K-8 building, and no high schools at that rate. Our sub-rate, which obviously in January was very low, it was 54.1%, has gone up dramatically. Our normal sub-rate in a month is around 84%. That's about the fill rate that we have normally. In February of this year, it was 78.44%. Now, we did miss some days because of snow in February, but overall, that's our percent. So, we're moving absolutely and positively in the right direction. Our mandates across have been changing. Governor Kelly is lifting the mask mandate for government employees. Dr. Menz stated the rates are going down and that we are unlikely to have another spike. Dr. Barnes of Sedgwick County said that we could reach the 5% rate in Kansas City, in Sedgwick County, fairly soon. Now, there's no definition of that because we're currently at 7.4, but it's going in the right direction. Because of all of these changes, literally in the last two weeks, I would like to make a motion that's kind of a compromise because, as I said at the beginning, we have our community polarized, some wanting masks desperately forever and some wanting masks to go away yesterday. So, under the assumption, my motion is, under the assumption that COVID medical data and cases will continue to decline, I move that the Wichita Board of Education discontinue the mask mandate requirement currently in place, effective at the conclusion of the Business Day on Thursday, March 10th, 2022. It will be recommended, and masks will be recommended and welcomed, but not required in all district facilities, athletic, and extracurricular events, starting March 11th, 2022. In addition, it should be noted that a presidential mandate on January 21st, 21, requires masks that be worn on all public transportation. So, masks will still be required on our buses until the mandate is changed or dropped. The district will continue to track the COVID district data, and if there are major upward trends, this board could relook at the decision at a future BOE meeting. Parents and guardians will be advised of this decision, and building signage will be modified to reflect that masks are encouraged and welcome. I put that motion on the floor. I second it.
Cheryl, second by Ernest Dean on that motion. I have the speakers so far as Kathy, Hazel, Diane, Ernest, oh, sorry, Julie, Ernest Dean. All right. Kathy, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me? Okay. We called this special session specifically to address the outpouring cry from the administration, teachers, students, and our community about lifting the mask mandate right away. Because we claim to be a data-driven board, there is pertinent data that needs to be presented, and Cheryl gave you some of it already. The data and the science are the driving forces of today's special meeting. I would like to share an email that I received Saturday evening. In fact, the entire board received it. It goes to say, "I am a 13-year teacher, currently teaching in USD 259 since 2015, sending an email imploring you to vote to end the mask mandate immediately. Teaching phonics to students when they cannot see my face or teaching social-emotional skills when they cannot see their peers' faces has been, to me, destructive to their academic and social well-being. I have never emailed the board about this mask issue before, nor have I ever been vocal about complaining on social media or teacher groups. I attended an in-service yesterday and witnessed multiple staff and presenters not masking up. Presenters acknowledged they were not wearing masks because, to quote them, 'Speaking with no mask is more helpful so you all can see our mouths,' even when microphones were used.' These were district officials. Even presenters in our breakout rooms didn't wear a mask as we teachers sat masked all day. So many district officials just sat throughout our in-service location unmasked, walking around, mingling how they wanted with no mask on. And then, as a teacher, I am forced to teach with a mask on and expect my students, who are not readers yet, to be able to learn how to make proper mouth movements for letter sounds and expect students to learn to behave or respond appropriately in social-emotional ways when they cannot read facial cues of their peers or teachers. Please stop this double standard insanity immediately, but our tiny students and teachers better keep their masks on. Please end this now." And just last evening, I received this. "I am a speech-language pathologist in Derby Public Schools. I found out some horrific news on Friday, and I want to pass it along. Many of my fellow SLP friends I went to grad school with were posting about how the CDC has changed the developmental norms for speech and language development. So, I went to the CDC website to check this out myself. What I found was unfortunately true. Yes, they have changed the norms. The only reason I can see for them doing this is to cover up the devastating developmental delays that we are seeing in COVID babies, which I believe is the result of masking people of all ages. I am not sure why the Center for Disease Control is dictating the norms of speech-language development in the first place. If we don't lift this mandate now, I'm concerned there will be bigger problems in the future with delay in development. I say this hoping, and this is me talking, common sense tells us it is time to lift the mask mandate today, replacing it with options. Unfortunately, there has never been an exit strategy for lifting the mask mandate. I am only stating that the mandate needs to be lifted where parents will have the option of whether to send their child to school with or without a mask. Any student, teacher, or staff member who wishes to continue to wear a mask will still be able to do so as safety measures will still be in place for them." There's one more thing. And just this morning, I received this. "I am a teacher for USD 259. I hope that you make the decision today to lift the mask mandate for social, emotional, educational, and health reasons. The mask mandate is causing social-emotional disruptions to the schools in USD 259. Because of the district's initiative to feed breakfast to every child every morning, students eat breakfast together in the classroom. Every day at lunch, students eat together in the cafeteria. Every time we have a snack in the classroom, students eat together. Considering that students are not masked while eating, it is not logical that students and staff are being required to put their masks on preceding and following these unmasked periods of the day. Throughout the year, I have heard school staff yell at kids to put their masks on when the kids finish up their lunch. It is illogical that the students have been taught that the moment you finish eating, you are selfishly exposing your neighbors to all of your germs. I have heard such comments as, 'Why do I see your face? Put your mask on.' Instead of creating a safe place for students, this strict mandate has created excess fear in some students and disruptive behaviors in others. The schools will continue to impede the development of our students with trauma if this continues, and it will increase disruptive behaviors." and it will increase disruptive behaviors. The mask mandate is also continuing to widen the gap in our learners' phonics awareness, listening skills, and vocabulary. All day long, my students are misinterpreting my directions and words in our decoding phonics routine. Sounds like P, D, M, B, and N get mixed up throughout the day, and students create erroneous letter sound schemes. Masks have not created a more sanitary environment. Students sneeze in their masks, lay their masks on the cafeteria table, and drop their masks on the playground, and are expected to continue wearing the same mask throughout the day. I have seen school staff pick up child's masks with their bare hands, putting their fingers all over the part that lays against the mouth, and tell a kid to put the same mask on their mouth. If we wait until March eleventh to move, to vote on your motion, I'd fear that we are going to lose the confidence of our community, our teachers, and our students. Therefore, I wondered, Mr. Chairman, if I could make a substitute motion to rescind the initial motion based on what I just said."
We don't follow the Robert rules of order. Do you have a substitute motion you'd like to make?
Yes. I would like to make a motion to, immediately, effectively, today, to drop the mandate of the masks.
So, basically, the same motion as February seventh? Do, okay. All right. The reason why I ask that is what we will do in order to kind of have a substitute motion is we have a motion on the floor, we'll vote on that. If it fails, we will, well, whether it fails or doesn't fail, we will then vote on your motion as well. Is that fair? Thank you, Kathy, and I appreciate you being clear and concise in your position. As I, as I mentioned, one of the roles of the president is to try to conduct a concise and clear meeting, and you've helped on that. Thank you very much. Hazel?
Yes. I would like to take this opportunity to acknowledge the numerous emails that we have all received from teachers, students, and parents. There is an outcrying request to please make the masking optional. Teachers are reaching out and asking to remain anonymous because they are fearful of potential consequences for not supporting the mask mandate. I want the public to be aware of what we are hearing. Here are just a few examples from teachers. "Please make masks optional. Although masking was a correct thing to do in the beginning of the COVID scare, I now believe masks have lost effectiveness and are more of a hindrance than prevention for stopping the COVID spread. We know COVID is here to stay. Let our natural immune system do what it is supposed to do. The mask has created so much anxiety, depression, and truancy with our students. As a teacher, it is incredibly hard to teach in a mask all day. I worry about long-term consequences this will have for our students, and feel they far outweigh any benefits masks provide at this time. If you, as board members, have the best interests and staff in mind, you will offer us a choice. From the parents, please drop the mask mandate. Masks are hindering my children's growth and learning experience. Let us make our own choice to mask our kids. Please provide the science you are using to continue to mask our kids. My daughter has mental health and, my daughter's mental health and outlook on school has severely declined. The virus has weakened. Vaccines are available. For the sake of our children, please remove masks and help their education be less challenging." I could go on and on. We've all received these emails and many, many more, and I started to print them out. There were just so many that I stopped printing them. I tried to find some of the most, the comments that were the most occurring. I am asking, I propose as a board that we be proactive in creating a positive momentum and return to the business of what's right for our students. The unions have stated that they are in favor of maintaining masks, and I'd like to know if they've done any surveys, asking their teachers for their opinions. I would also like to see a survey and documentation as to the effects the masks have made, or what they may see as potential learning curves in the future. In my opinion, we are going to need to count on our educators to help us identify students' needs and develop a plan of recovery. Lastly, I'd like to know what the percentage of employees of two-five-nine and the students that have been vaccinated. Thank you.
Thank you, Hazel. Diane?
Thank you, President Reeser. I actually had a presentation to display on the charts up there for everybody to see, but apparently being elected board member doesn't allow you to do that. So, the board members all have printouts of the slides, and what they are is they are pictures of the charts that the district uses. So, I encourage everybody to go to the website and see the bar charts that the district displays. So, the first bar chart, I'm going to have to paint a picture with my words, so I apologize, but the board members have this information. The first chart is the student positive cases in the week, and if the public can see, we see the chart goes up and down, just like the community numbers do. What I was displaying was, I marked the date of the start of the mask mandate, and we had five hundred and twenty-two positive student cases in the district, which seemed high at the time. But when you look at it across the total number of students, which we have around about forty-seven thousand three hundred students in our district, when you take five hundred and twenty-two cases divided by forty-seven thousand three hundred, what you get is a one-point-one positive rate for COVID positivity in our district for students. At a one-point-one percent positivity rate, we implemented a mandatory mask mandate for everybody in our district. If we move on to the chart where it spikes, we have one thousand three hundred and eight positive cases, and that was the highest peak that we experienced in the district. When you take that number divided by forty-seven thousand three hundred students, we get a positivity rate of two-point-seven-seven percent. We are mandating masks for less than three percent of a positive rate during the peak of COVID. Less than three percent. Currently, at our rate, we have thirty-four students that Cheryl mentioned that tested positive for COVID last week. When you take that and divide it by our total students, we are at a current positive rate of COVID at a zero-point-zero-seven percent positivity rate for students in our district. We say we are a board driven by data. How much lower do the numbers need to be for us to remove this mask mandate and allow parents, like some of our speakers here today, have asked that they be the decision-makers when it comes to health? As a district, we cannot give gummy multivitamins to students because it's a health decision. What gives us the right and the authority to make these kind of health decisions that we're forcing upon everybody at this time? Cheryl, I thank you for your motion, but I do ask that the date be moved to immediately, and I'll continue on. If we look at the next chart, chart number three for the board, we have a very similar bar chart that is displaying staff positivity rates. If we do the same numbers and method, during the peak of our COVID cases, we had nine hundred and fifty-one staff members out. And just like Cheryl mentioned, staff members are more than just teachers. They're the paras. They're all staff members according to USD two-five-nine. We have seven thousand six hundred and thirty-two staff members according to our website. When I take that number and divide it by the total staff numbers, we have a positivity rate of four-point-six percent during the peak of COVID positive rates in the district. Currently, we stand at a point-two-four positivity rate for teachers. Point-two-four. If we move on to chart number four for the board members, we've got current students in quarantine. This is a chart that has a, it's a line chart that goes across that shows the peaks and the ebbs and flows of the quarantine status for students. When we started the mask mandate, well, let me back up. What we did was we took the percentage difference between the COVID positive tests and those in quarantine. We took the case numbers and divided that by the total number of people in quarantine. When we implemented the mask mandate, we had almost eighty-one percent of the people that were in quarantine were at home without a positive COVID test. They had either tested negative or were not exhibiting any symptoms, but they were at home on quarantine due to policy. Even during the peak, and I apologize that I can't show a visual of this, during the peak of COVID, we had seventy-three percent of students that were on quarantine with no positive COVID test. They were just at home because of policy issues. They were not exhibiting any symptoms. These people should have been in the buildings. So, currently, right now, we have thirty-four positive cases, but yet we have one hundred and twenty-six students out on quarantine. That means ninety-two percent, ninety-two students should be in the classroom right now. They are not sick. If we move on to chart number five for the board, we go to the current staff in quarantine. It produces similar results, so I won't go through all of those numbers. But right now, currently as we sit, we have eighteen staff members that are testing positive for COVID, but we have one hundred and thirty-six out on quarantine right now. That means we have one hundred and eighteen staff members that are at home that should be in the buildings, but they're at home due to policy. Slide number six is a snapshot of the Cedric County dashboard, and as many of you have heard on the news, that we are at the lowest point since July with COVID cases. In the last two weeks, there have only been just over eleven hundred positive cases in all of Cedric County. To make that, to drive that point home, we have over five hundred and twenty thousand people in Cedric County, and we had eleven hundred cases. That gives us a percent positive rate of point-two-two percent. And if you look at that dashboard and go into clusters by entity, almost sixty-five percent of those COVID positive tests are in long-term care facilities. They're not even out in the general public. On Friday, we had, out of all of Cedric County, we had seventeen positive cases. If you take the seventeen divided by the five hundred and twenty-three hundred thousand people that we have in our county, that gives us a positive percentage rating of point-zero-zero-three-two percent. How much lower do these numbers need to be for us to make masking optional? Let us be driven by the data and not a feeling of it's better to do something over nothing. We need to look at these numbers in great detail. We have surrounding districts that have made masking optional. Salina and McPherson School Boards recently voted seven-zero to end their mask mandates immediately, not after spring break. Mays, Goddard, Valley Center, Andover, Derby, Hutchinson, and Hayesville all do not have mask mandates. And I would also point out that they are, most of those are in the Cedric County area. Kansas City, Blue Valley, and Shawnee Mission districts, and in Johnson County, they've all removed their mask mandates. Even Governor Kelly removed the mandate for the state employees. How are we going to be a district of choice in our region when we're the only school district still forcing compliance with masking? Our district needs to allow parents their rightful place back in making health decisions for their children. As Cheryl brought up, thank you, Cheryl, that Dr. Menz, our local health officer for Cedric County, he did state in an interview that we are unlikely to see another huge spike in COVID cases because between natural immunity and vaccines, cases are down. So, our local health officer does not expect to see another huge spike in cases. This is data that we should be listening to. And we've all seen a number of emails from teachers explaining how difficult these mandates are, which is why we need to move to masking optional. There was, there was a study in the Journal of Infection for immunocompromised students. The UK published a study in the Journal of Infection in January two thousand twenty-two, and the data was collected by over fifteen hundred participants over forty-six hospitals. And what that study showed was that infections from immunocompromised children and young people showed no increased risk of severe disease. So, even the immunocompromised children did not experience worse COVID symptoms than their healthy counterparts. So, the good news during all of this is that two weeks ago on CNN, Dr. Lena Nguyen, their medical correspondent, said that restrictions should be lifted as quickly as possible, that we need a reevaluation of pandemic restrictions, starting, most importantly, with our schools. She stated that the responsibility should shift from a government mandate to an individual responsibility by the family. She encouraged that there is one-way masking. So, for people that are not ready to take the mask off, for people who are scared that removing the mandate will create increased risk, Dr. Lena Nguyen said that if you wear a high-quality mask, you can trust your vaccines, you can trust your boosters, and you can continue to live a low-risk lifestyle regardless of what others around you are doing. You can wear a mask. The district is providing masks, and you can wear a mask and continue living a low-risk lifestyle regardless of what others around you are doing. This is not my opinion. This is a doctor's. Please let that sink in for a minute. If you feel strongly about wearing a mask, no one will stop you. The district's providing them. I plead with this board to please listen to the parents, listen to the teachers, to allow masking to be optional. We should never hear stories like Heather Dunning today. That was heartbreaking to listen to. Thank you for sharing your, your story with us today, but that was truly heartbreaking to listen to. And it's a policy issue. We have got to remove these mandates for that. If people want to wear one, wear one. But there are some people who really struggle with it, and we have got to take those people into consideration and stop trying to do a one-size-fits-all mandate. It's not good for our district. How are we going to be a district of choice if we don't allow individual differences when it comes to health? All of us board members up here have different health needs. We have got to recognize that for over forty-seven thousand students, for over seven thousand teachers and staff. Our emails, I'm getting inundated with emails, and surprisingly, from a lot of teachers. A lot of teachers, yeah, I see Esau shaking his head, a lot, a lot. It's heartbreaking, some of these stories. If we're, if you support mask-wearing, wear it. But we have got to move to an optional status very quickly, I would say immediately.
Thank you, Diane. Ernest, excuse me, Julie?
Yeah, we've heard a lot of data today, and I think that's great because from, from the beginning of the pandemic, this school board has attempted to follow the medical science and the data. Also, since this was a medical issue, we looked to medical professionals in our community and in the nation for advice, and we did partner with our local medical cohorts. And this past week, I actually reached out again to Dr. Paul Turan, who is in the Kansas COVID Work Group for Kids. And I asked Dr. Paul if, just to be current, you know, we've, we've heard from him, this board has heard from him all throughout the pandemic, but I asked him, just to be current, what would be a current metric regarding universal masking in schools, whether to continue that or to, whether to lift that? And he sent me a report from the Journal of School Health, and it's, it's that report and the guidance of that report that I'm going to refer to here in my comments. The report indicated that regarding a decision whether to continue a mandate for masking or whether to lift it, is you have to look at two large factors. The two large factors are the school, the current school impact of COVID, and then, secondly, the community burden of the community that your school is located in. So, we've already quoted a lot- So we've already quoted a lot of the data, which is also what I was going to refer to. On the student side, we're looking really good with the 34 positive cases. There were only two weeks lower in this school year at eight. And our student quarantine numbers are the lowest all year. So the data looks good for students. Staff data, as has been mentioned, is going down very significantly. But the 18 is in the lowest quarter of staff positive rate. The quarantine numbers are above the meridian throughout the year, but far below the mean. So we still, we, we still have some staff out. Again, far improved, far improved, but we still have some staff out such that our subfill is at 78%. As Cheryl quoted, typically, we're, you know, we're, we've been at 84, so we're still down a little. Our community also is in a much better place than we have been. But when we look at this dashboard that, that was provided on slide six, not all of you can see it, but all of us can, we're at 7.4%. But, you know, that's not really low compared to the year and, and, but, but it is dropping, and our local health officials say that they expect it to continue to drop. So I am in support of Cheryl's motion. It gives us a little bit more time, and things are dropping. Gives us a little bit more time, plus also her motion assumed that the numbers would be dropped, that we wouldn't go back up. And so I am in support of, of the motion to, to lift the mandate on the 10th. At the end, I guess it's at the end of the school day on the 10th, so actually lifted on the 11th. And I would just encourage our community, you know, part of the reason why the community impact is still important as a school district is, is that we have, we have students that have younger children in their households that are not able to be vaccinated, and we have staff that have young children in their households that aren't yet able to be vaccinated. But I would state the encouragement to all of our community that use this, the spring break time when you're not in school to get out and get vaccinated. The best thing that we can-
Please, 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 please.
The best thing that we can do for our, for our not spreading this illness is- I would encourage people to get vaccinated. Everyone in the audience has their choice of whether they do or do not. The community has their choice of whether they do or do not.
We still have a board, excuse me, Julie, we still have a board member talking, and we still have another board member that has signed up to speak. And so I implore you to keep your comments to yourself. Everyone has their opinion, everyone has their thoughts, and you will always, always have those, and no one's taking that away from you. But we are in a public meeting, and we need you to be courteous to all board members and let them speak. And we will have a vote, which is, I think, is something that you want. So please, do not interrupt the, the board members again. And Julie, if you want to, go ahead.
Yeah, I just, that's the end of my, of my comments.
Thank you, Julie. Ernestine?
Do you want to go before I speak? You had said you wanted to speak, do you want to speak before I do?
No, I'm fine.
I didn't see your hand, yeah.
Okay. Well, one of the things that I want to point out to people is, in the Constitution, where it starts with "we, the people," do establish this Constitution, one of the things it says is to promote the general welfare. Just as we have rules that say that we can't have smoking in our buildings, it's not because we're depriving, we're worried about somebody's health, whether they smoke or not, although I personally might be concerned since my husband died of lung cancer from smoking. But the issue is what it does to the others. One of the concerns that I have about, and why I've stuck with the mask mandate, is because we have a great number of children in our district that are immunocompromised. We have a great number that also have type 1 diabetes. We have a great number of children in the homes that are under 5 that can't get vaccinated, and our children and our staff can bring it home to them. We understand that a person has the right to choose how that they take care of their own health. What we're doing is a public decision based on what's best for the, looking out for the general welfare. I just want to say that I'm in favor of getting rid of the masks as soon as possible. I am also very concerned that right after spring break, if you look at Diane's charts, and they were excellent, you will notice that right after Christmas break was when the, January, when the huge spikes began. I am concerned that right after spring break, we may have another spike. But I am willing, because after spring break, we will have teachers that are able to take children outside to do learning outdoors. We'll be able to have children be able to play on the playgrounds. That will make it safer. So I'm not as concerned about what will happen after spring break as I was after the Christmas break. I am in favor of the spring break beginning of our eliminating the mandate. But I would just urge people, the point of your masks is not because we're trying to force you to protect yourself, it's because we care about those, the least of these that are in our community. We are the ones that are given that power and that responsibility to look out for all of the children.
Please, please.
Here's your, here's your mallet.
Uh, please, sir, sir. We are so close to finishing this up, and I am assuming you want us to do our business, so please. Ernestine, did you have anything else on that? I'm sorry.
No, I'm finished, thank you.
I, I don't know what else to do on allowing board members to talk. I, I mean, I, I don't know what else to ask you to do. But political rallies, you have every opportunity to do that, but not at a board member. So please. Kathy and Diane, we have a motion on the floor, and then we're going to take your motion. I'm wondering if you could hold off your, since we've all had a chance to talk on the original motion, or do you want to talk now? Okay. Diane, do you want to still talk after, okay?
I so appreciate you. You, you have just got the, the best heart, I really do. Julie, I want to respond to you, if you could help me understand something. If the numbers are going down, and the doctors that you've spoken to, and Dr. Minns in our community have said that he does not foresee another spike, I'm sorry, this mask is getting in my mouth. Why wait? I, I would just present the question of, help me understand, why should we wait if the-
I, I stated that in my comments, so-
I didn't hear it, I'm sorry.
Debate with you.
Okay, well, I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, so I'm, I'm a little confused-
I did, I stated it.
-as to why we wait. And Ernestine, as far as the, the masks and who they're supposed to help, Mr. Reiser, at the last board meeting, you compared the mask-wearing to wearing a seatbelt. And I quote you saying, "I'm wearing this mask for the same reason I wear a seatbelt. I wanted to give myself the best opportunity that was out there that could get me here safely." So again, the masks are, we're not asking to take masks away. No, 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 no. We're asking-
I understand that.
Wait, give the parents the choice today to say, Johnny, you're going to go to school wearing a mask because I just want extra precautions for you. Suzie, you don't have to wear a mask to school today. It's the parents' choice. It's, they are the ones that have the power with their children's health decisions. It's not ours. I, I would never be presumptuous to tell a parent, "You have to do this with your kid's health." I, I wouldn't, and I would not expect anyone to say that about my children. The, the data's there, the, the statements have been said, that these numbers are going down. I'm encouraged, I'm excited, as I would hope everybody in this room is. We can all rejoice together. You can keep your mask on. Nobody is saying take it off. All I am saying is immediately let the parents make the choice. That's all I'm saying.
Diane?
I'd like to know what science and data we're using to implement the March 10th date.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cheryl?
I assume you're asking me that, since I made the motion. I, what I am basing my information on is the fact that everything is going down with COVID, so we, I am at the point, as I was in early November, I was willing in early November to, to remove the masks, and then everything went crazy on us. And we had the biggest spike that we've ever had in January. But, but now the numbers are going down. I personally believe that they will continue to go down. The reasoning for why March 10th is because we have a lot of people, as I referenced in my comments, we have a divided group. Some really believe masks should go away yesterday, some think they should keep them on till the end of the school year. And we need to give both sides the opportunity to breathe deeply, get to spring, which our weather, we're going to have more snow this week, so if we get the weather straightened out, we'll have warmer weather, we'll have the, with the data going down, I feel comfortable removing them at spring break and coming back for the last nine weeks without masks. Data is saying that we really pay attention to not only what facts are, and by the way, I do have a little bit of question with your numbers, where you were dividing by our school district numbers and so on, because you were not taking into account that COVID numbers, like the number 34, is a, is a point in time, one day. But that layers upon the other days when we've had people, because they run over a period of time while they're out for quarantine. The single number is a point-in-time number only. But with those numbers going down, I do feel comfortable removing masks. We just have to keep them on, give our parents the chance to adjust the ones that do not want us to remove the masks, and also give us a chance to get signage changed in our buildings, because we're going to be changing all the signage to reflect that masks are encouraged and welcome, not required, and all the other pieces that go with changing a huge system in a new direction. So that's my logic in why I chose the 10th.
Thank you, Cheryl. I think we've gone around the table and do it, and we know, and I want you to be aware. Oh, Diane, go ahead.
Can I respond to that real quick? So I've been, the Cedric County data dashboard was just updated since we've been in this meeting, and it's, the community rate is now 5.7%. And then also, COVID's not driven by weather relation, the temperature outside, as we can see in our charts from the student and staff positivity rate. And I would say that we increased case rates while we had a mask mandate here, so attributing the decline in numbers to the mask is a little convoluted when we had an increase with a mask mandate. But, so you stated the date has to do more with kind of negotiating between the two sides, right? If I understand you correctly? Could we amend your motion to be March 1st, since we're kind of negotiating between the two sides, where we could have time to get signage, but it's not so far out that this, you know, the families, like the Dunnings, are struggling. Every day that goes by is another struggle, and I think we should express compassion to families like that, because they are by far not the only family that is reaching out to us. And I know, I know you know that, Cheryl, I know you read, read all the emails and you try to respond to everybody. But I, I would ask you to amend your motion to March 1st. That way, we can move forward with this sooner rather than later, according to, to doctors' recommendations. And even Dr. Minns states that he does not see a huge spike that's coming back. So I know nobody can predict the future, but we can use data points, and I feel that there's data-driven information that shows that the caseload is very, very low, and to, to wait to see if that's going to even drop even further, I, I mean, we're already pretty close to zero right now, so we're never going to reach zero. And then also, like I stated before during my comments, the one-way masking, where people can choose to protect themselves and, and take the precautions that they need to as individuals and families. Would you be open to amending that motion?
I am not open to that. I really want to hold it that we remove masks after spring break. It'll be on the, the 11th, but we have that week of spring break. So I'm not willing to amend my motion at this time.
Ernestine?
I think this has been a good discussion, and I think our speakers have been very effective, and I think over time, we've heard from a lot of very effective people. I want to suggest that we've had enough, and that perhaps, while we don't go by Robert's Rules of Orders, where we say, "I call the question," I do call the question, I suggest that we vote now. We have two motions on the table, let's vote on the first one, and then the second one, and then perhaps if we need to go to a third.
Thank you, Ernestine, I appreciate that. And we'll go ahead and take a vote, and if you have some more comments on the second motion, we'll continue with that. All those in favor of the motion?
I'm sorry. So I don't, could I ask a clarifying question as far as how this motion goes? If we vote this motion to be approved, to have masks removed on March 10th, can we also vote on the next motion to allow them to be removed immediately?
And since Kathy mentioned is immediate, that would supersede this motion.
Okay.
So we have a motion on the floor, all those in favor, you'll have to raise your hand.
What is the motion?
This is Cheryl's motion.
Motion, because-
Patrick, go ahead.
The motion is that the Wichita Board of Education discontinue the mask requirement currently in place, effective at the conclusion of the Business Day on Thursday, March 10, 2022. Masks will be recommended and welcomed, but not required in all district facilities and athletic or extracurricular activities, starting March 11th, 2022. Additionally, it should be noted that a presidential mandate on January 21st, 2021 requires masks must be worn on all public transportation, so masks will still be required on our buses until the, this mandate is changed or dropped. The district will continue to track the COVID district data, and if there are major upward trends, the board could relook at this decision at a future BOE meeting. Parents and guardians will be advised of this decision, and building signage will be modified to reflect that masks are encouraged and welcome.
Thank you. Motion's on the floor, moved by Cheryl, seconded by Ernestine, all those in favor, raise your Those opposed, raise your hand. Motion carries four, three, with Ernestine Crable, Stan Reiser, Julie Hedrick, Cheryl Logan voting yes. Voting no, Diane Albert, Kathy Bond, Hazel Stapler. Kathy, you have the floor. Oh, I need a second for your motion. It was moved by Kathy, seconded by Hazel, to, if you want to state your motion again.
Yes, I made the mo-
Yes, I made the motion to lift the mandate effective today.
Okay, that's clear, clear and concise. Any discussion on that motion? Diane?
Yeah, I would encourage the other board members to support this motion. One of the, one of the concerns that I have with the recommended verbiage on, on Cheryl's motion is masks have been used to bully others into submission and making decisions that are against their best interest. And we can see what has happened in our community and with others on the forced masking. I think Mr. Freeman is a great example of forcing people into compliance and following the, the rules. He's, he's more concerned about following the rules than, than anything else, and that is of great concern to me. That's why I support just making masking optional, and that's why I'll support this motion.
Thank, thank you, Diane. Hazel, you started to raise your hand, or did you not want to, okay, Cheryl?
That's part of the reason I put in that motion, the fact that masks will be not required, but rather encouraged and welcomed, because if a person really wants to wear a mask, they certainly should feel welcome and not be bullied in our schools. So I purposely put that statement in the motion, because I wanted to encourage anybody who felt strongly about continuing to wear a mask. They would know that, we, we welcome that in our buildings.
Thank you, I appreciate that clarification. Diane?
I would, I would say, what about the, the people who don't feel comfortable wearing a mask? They're the ones that are usually ostracized and publicly shamed and humiliated. I mean, that's a common thread with some of the teachers and staff that are reaching out, that they feel they can't be outspoken about their position against the masks, because they go, quote, "Look at what they're doing to you." And it's, it breeds a discontent and a disunity within our district, that, that's the concern, that's what we're trying to move past, by this motion of just optional. If you want to wear a mask, wear one, but it's the people who don't feel comfortable that are being publicly shamed and humiliated if they have a different health need.
Thank you, Diane. Motion's on the floor, all those in favor, raise your hand. All those opposed, raise your hand. Motion fails four, three, with Diane Albert, Kathy Bond, Hazel Stapler voting yes, Ernestine Crable, Stan Reeser, Julie Hedrick, Cheryl Logan voting no. Patrick, next item, please.
Next item, under miscellaneous adjournment?
I move that we adjourn this special meeting. Seconded by, a motion by Stan Reeser to adjourn, seconded by Ernestine Crable. All those in favor, raise your hand. Motion carries seven, zero.